Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Well, good evening, everybody. We will call this Monday, November 18th, City Council Meeting to Order. And sorry about your luck, you got the backup quarterback tonight, so bear with me, we'll muddle on through. Don't be afraid to laugh at the new guy. Anyway, we'll get this started. We want to welcome Reverend Jonathan Langerick with Heritage Protestant Reformed Church. He will give our invocation. What's that?
First reading the roll.
Oh, okay. I've already goofed up and I just started. Clerk, would you read the roll, please? Councilmember Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Okay, and now we will get to our invocation. Thank you, Jonathan, for being here. And after the invocation, please stay on your feet for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm going to read a few verses from Proverbs 29. By justice a king builds up the land, but he who exacts gifts tears it down. An evil man is ensnared in his transgression, but a righteous man sings and rejoices. A righteous man knows the rights of the poor; a wicked man does not understand such knowledge. Scoffers set a city aflame, but the wise turn away wrath. If a ruler listens to falsehood, all his officials will be wicked. If a king faithfully judges the poor, his throne will be established forever. One's pride will bring him low, but he who is lowly in spirit will obtain honor. The fear of man lays a snare, but whoever trusts in the Lord is safe. Many seek the face of a ruler, but it is from the Lord that a man gets justice. Let us pray. Father in heaven, I pray for wisdom for our city council assembled for this meeting tonight. May the decisions that they take serve to build up our city by justice. May they faithfully judge and refuse to hear falsehood. May they remember the fear of man brings a snare, but whoever trusts the Lord shall be safe. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
What we believe is due to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will proceed with approval of the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor.
I would like to pull the Walea Convenience Store Exhibit B in item 14.
14. Do we need a motion in a second, or just...? Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Do we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Motion to approve by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any other discussion? If not, a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky? Brecky? Erickson?
Yes.
Yes.
Kylie?
Brecky, yes.
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second, Staley.
Okay. Motion to amend the regular agenda by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Counselor Staley.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Nitzer.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the regular agenda by moving item 50 to immediately following item 38.
Second, Erickson.
Okay, so we have an amendment by Nitzer, seconded by Erickson. Do we vote first on the amendment? On the amendment, Counselor Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes, eight to zero. Now I vote on the amended motion. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. We've now gotten to the public input portion of our meeting. As part of this, as a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. For regular agenda items, following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public forward for general public input. Please note that the time is 7:05. Welcome.
Good evening. Bruce Danielson. Last Sunday's Argus Leader said a lot, and watching the video coming out of this chamber from last Tuesday made many people of Sioux Falls wonder why. Why is our current council leadership even here? The childish behavior of private texting, goofy eye signals, and pretending to wash hands made many of us wish to wash our hands of you. As you sit before us, you want us to believe that you can swear on a Bible, being held by a group of nuns, hugging your mothers, and you have done right and honorable things. Despite the warning signs, citizens knew then and are now confirmed, we had a... We've had a series of issues that have come up. Recently, we had the questionable loss of a life, the questionable loss of a historic building, a questionable need for many projects being supported, a questionable selection of partners for city projects, a questionable financing plan, a questionable contract, and then when promised it would never happen, the questionable use of the second penny to finance a project allegedly so perfect it could never fail. So Sioux Falls, you can now thank your council leadership team for not getting your potholes repaired. Money is going to be going into pot... from the potholes into paying for a ramp. Last week, the leadership team had the audacity to mock a fellow council member, a licensed attorney, speaking actual legal terminology, referring to the process of cleaning up the mess that you caused. So to help you clean your hands, I will leave you the following. To remember the dreams of making Sioux Falls the Big Apple, I have brought the city council leadership apple hand sanitizer. To remember the peach of a deal, that you made Peach Blossom sanitizer. For the lemon of a project, Meyer Lemon sanitizer. And to help you clean up the stink of this entire mess, Ocean Breeze sanitizer. So I ask the council leadership to grow up and clean up. This town is tired of your games. Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward? Welcome.
I'm David Sokitis, and I'm here to talk about a couple of cost overruns and how we could be a little better about preventing them in the future. Now, when you make a contract, it's nice to get a fixed price. If you buy a car, you want the thing to work, and if the dealer forgets to put an engine in, that's on him and not on the buyer. And you should do something similar when you buy a building. The city's got a couple of recent cost overruns. Half a million at the administrative center because the heating system didn't work, and a million and a half at the parking lot. And to my knowledge, the city is making no effort to retrieve these cost overruns. Talked to the city attorney. I sent email, anyway, and haven't heard back, so I guess we're just not trying. Well, that fits, you know, it's with the rest of the secrecy and trying to make a gift to the partners. And read that last sentence there. That kind of problem really encourages cost overruns. Now, if we look a little deeper, both of these projects have some inherent problems. The alternatives to the administrative building were ignored. We could have bought the 300 building, it was cheap. We could have added on to the county administrative building. The citizen petition with 6,000 signatures in a matter of weeks was ignored. The hotel and the parking rent makes for a very expensive project. It just looks really bad. It looks like both projects are really gifts, along with the cost overruns. With democracy, we've got a problem in that you have to really sell your services. Most politicians have to sell their services to get money to elect... to get... be elected. Well, nationally, this is a great disaster, because if you put $1 into buying Congress, you get $760 out. Big, big problem. There's a reference on that last point. So I've got a couple of recommendations. We should try to get that $2 million back. We should make contracts that do not award cost overruns. And I really think we would all be better off if the city would pay for mayoral campaigns. We'd save a fortune. And I know it's dreary out there, but there's still some beauty in this kind of weather. So with that, try to enjoy life and have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak tonight?
Christopher the Living Man, this will be my last and final meeting, and I plan to make it a good one. You are now looking at a man who has done all he can for his city, his state, his country, and humanity. I leave you all to the fate you have elected in. Not long ago, I watched the mayor stand in front of the city with Senator Thune and say that the installation of 5G had been a day he'd been looking forward to for a long time, not long before I started getting physically ill and had to shut the video off. I thought this was a rather odd thing to say. What person waits a long time for the day that his city installs a new cellphone network upgrade in his city, and why? I'll tell you why. Three days before I had even met the mayor, I was tracked by one of our police sergeants, walking from the Carnegie Center all the way down to the library by the city's new cameras installed in our new LED streetlights, all because I was handing out some information to the city that was anti what the mayor wanted. That's what they can do now. With 5G, there will be instant facial recognition, and those same cameras will be able to track you by the way you walk. And the AI behind them will be able to predict your every move. The same AI will know what color underwear you wear, what you're afraid of, what books you like to buy, and will know who your entire circle of friends and family are. It'll know what you say and do at council meetings, where you purchase your dog food, and whether you smile at the funnies. And what it knows, the mayor, his council, and all the people that work for the police department will also know. This is where technology stops being funny. The police in this country have killed over 4,335 people in this country since 2015 so far. The people have only killed 339 other people. Next, they plan to issue them handheld microwave weapons. Now, instead of tasing you incessantly from two feet away or shooting you in the back in the street when you're unarmed, they can now nuke you from as far away as 25 yards at night, and you won't have a clue as to why you're dying a year later. Is this what you want? Because this is what 5G brings. The mayor has been looking forward to 5G because it means the days of people speaking out against the city council are almost over. It's because control of your lives by your government over everything you say and do is just about here. And when you're looking for the only guy who can tell you anything about what's really going on, I won't be here anymore. May God have mercy on you all. I have with me copies of an article where government openly admits that it intends to spy on us all through our smart devices using 5G. As a mayor, I suppose I'd really look forward to that day. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Steven Ciano. Once again, I want to address the... and try to follow that, well, about the Human Relations Department, supposed to help disabled people. As the... what is it? The health clinic is... was supposed to, and both of them gathered a lot of information and suppressed a lot of information. And that seems to be what this administration has been doing. And as this former presenter made a point of, yeah, 5G will, as other means, medical, various city entities like Human Relations Department can gather information. I'm sure that people have... certain people have a lot of information on me, and I don't know if I should expect some blow from... where I don't expect it to follow, because reprisals happen. This is human nature. This is... if you have somebody's a thorn in your side, somebody's calling you on your evil ways, then hey, look at what they did to that philosopher Rabbi Jesus, who many of you consider to be God incarnate. If you listen to his words, as I've said before, and you can listen to many other people's words, but of course, as Gandhi said, religion is politics, and I like your Christ, but not your Christians. And Jesus said, "You'll know them by their works, and beware those who come to you dressed as sheep, for within there ravenous wolves and such things as that. And the truth will set you free." And I ask that all of you have an epiphany. I can hope that you will seek the truth and respect your duty to your fellow person and do something about this, various things that are a threat to us. And also, hold people accountable. As I said last time, we need some oversight. My letters to you people have not been publicized. The public has a right to know what I have said. I have not performed well, and I have come up here repeatedly, and I've done better in letters, and I believe you people are aware of that. And we need accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward? All right, next item, please.
The next item was an item pulled from the consent agenda, item 14, various retail liquor, packaged liquor, and retail wine license renewals for 2020 to be operated at various locations in the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, identified as Exhibit B. The specific item pulled was for business name Walea Convenience Store at 812 East 10th Street.
Counselor Staley, did you pull that item?
I did, and I guess I would like to... I know there's been some discussion about this, and I would... I'm going to wait to make my comments after our public input.
Okay. Yes, this is a public hearing, so I invite those who wish to speak to it to come forward to the podium if they'd like to address it. Okay. Nobody? Okay. Welcome.
Good evening, counsel, and thanks for your service. I appreciate it. My name is Dave Janssens. I'm here representing myself tonight, personally affected by addiction and worked in the addiction field for about 10 years. But a particular interest of mine throughout all that has been how public policy can be utilized to address alcohol harms in our city. It's a complex, and as you might see tonight, somewhat at times, it's kind of a highly charged issue. Now, Sioux Falls is far from unique when it comes to issues surrounding alcohol harm. All major metro areas struggle with this issue, so much so that the CDC commissioned a comprehensive study to determine the most effective methods available to combat this issue. If you look up at the screen, you'll see that limiting alcohol outlet density was among the top three recommendations from the CDC's Community Guide Study. Let me tell you a little bit about the Community Guide Study. The Community Guide is a free resource... free resource for evidence-based recommendations and findings. It's an independent, non-federal volunteer body of public health and prevention experts. The task force bases its recommendations and findings on systematic reviews of scientific literature. These reviews are conducted with oversight from the task force by scientists and subject matter experts from the Centers for Disease Control in collaboration with a wide range of government, academic, policy, and practice-based partners. So you see, the government has done a lot of work in this area, and you might look to them for some guidance. Most of the studies included in this review found that greater alcohol outlet density is associated with increased alcohol consumption and related harms, including medical harms, injury, crime, violence. Primary evidence was supported by secondary evidence from correlational studies. The regulation of alcohol outlet density may be a useful public tool for the reduction of excessive alcohol consumption and related harms. Now, I realize that alcohol outlet density is part of a larger conversation than this license. This license renewed before you is very specific, but I wanted to bring this information to you tonight because I thought it was relevant to the discussion at hand, in hopes that it might facilitate or begin a larger discussion about how this body might address alcohol harm in Sioux Falls going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Say, Dave, if I could ask you, would you readjust those microphones? Just pull that one. Is that microphone issue because they're too... pull them apart?
Probably because I talked too loud and got too close?
No, it's... there's something. It was hard for me to hear him. Should they be...
Does that sound a little bit better, or...? Okay. Anybody else?
Thanks, Dave.
Hello.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Grant Howman. I live at 1510 South Phillips Avenue. I own property at the corner of 8th and Fairfax, known as the old Quinn City Wholesale Building. I'm here to speak in regards to the off-sale beer and wine licenses and why I am not in favor of this renewal. These licenses are granted. They come with responsibility to the public. It's a privilege granted by City Hall in our community, in our best interest. So you guys are making these decisions based on what's in the best interest of the community. When someone uses off-sale, like a bar, providing no restrooms, which code would require if it was a bar, and then based on the square footages, allowing their customers the ability to drink on premises, which they are, so they're treating their facility right now as a bar when it's off-sale wine and beer. It is a violation, not only the spirit of the law, but I believe it's a violation of the law. It's unfair to bars and other restaurants that are doing the off-sale establishments that are following the law. When you allow individuals to drink on the premises that aren't following the code requirements based on bathrooms, because you have to have bathrooms based on square footage, and if it's off-sale, they don't have to have necessarily the public bathrooms, is my understanding, and I could be corrected on that, then where are these people relieving themselves? Where are they... what restrooms are they using if you're selling alcohol in an off-sale premise, which you're supposed to take and go back to your home or go somewhere and utilize, but when you're allowing them to drink in the parking lot and then allowing them to go through the community and through the neighborhood, which, you know, we want a safe neighborhood, we want economic opportunity, and both of those things are not happening in the 8th Street area right now. I think we all agree, and we've all driven through and seen what has been happening in that neighborhood, and we'd all like to correct it. I think this is one of those elements that's causing some of these issues. So for these reasons, I would like to ask you to deny this license and to reevaluate it pretty heavily, knowing the issues that it's causing in the neighborhood. Again, I thank you for your time. I'll take any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, counsel.
Anybody else that wishes to speak to the topic? Come on up.
I'm Steve Swenson from the Handyman Store on 910 East 10th Street, and we're directly very close neighbors to the Walea Convenience Store. I don't... I'm not very polished politically, never spoken to this group before, but I don't know if you guys know what kind of a problem, how bad a problem it is. Like Grant said, they relieve... they relieve themselves on our building, in our alleyway. We have to clean up feces, and we have to clean up empty beer cans and empty booze containers every single day. We put a $12,000 fence up, and we paid for it. My brother and I paid for it out of our pocket because we can't control those people, and nobody else is doing it. The police, if you ask any cop in town, they'll tell you what the problem is. The problem is, Walea Convenience Store sells them single-drink nasty 14% alcohol beer, which I don't... I've never had one, but if... and it's just ridiculous. They're not doing it for any reason that any normal human being would go out and have entertainment. They're just doing it to... I don't know what they do it for. And I... do I feel sorry for them? Yeah, but I don't think we should have to pay for it. And I will take any questions if you guys have to.
Appreciate you coming up. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Hello?
Hi. Good evening. I want to thank you for your service. My name's Matt Walls. I live in Sioux Falls. I grew up in a Whittier neighborhood, and it's a very important neighborhood to me, and a very historical neighborhood. Grew up going to Drake Springs and frequenting the local businesses, which I still do. And as a citizen of Sioux Falls, I just... I'm a businessperson, and I understand that these guys and these businesses in this neighborhood are some of the hardest-working, most committed businesses I've ever known. And one of the things that troubles me is that there's one business in this neighborhood that is a blight on all the other businesses and on this neighborhood. And it's the store that's up for renewal here that we're talking about. To the other gentleman's point, I want to bring up two things. One is the chart that you see about how much Americans drink. Most people don't know that 30% of the population doesn't drink at all. The next 30% rarely drinks. Then there's the eighth decile, which is 10% of the population, has about six drinks a week. That's moderate for a woman. Another percentile... or another decile has about 15 drinks per week. That's about two a day. That's moderate for a male. Then there's 10% of the population who anyone would classify as a problem drinker, drinking as much as 74 drinks per week. In the business that I'm in, we call them alcoholics, or people with an alcohol use disorder. This is the population that is frequenting this specific location. There's no moderate drinkers that go there. I can promise you that. And one of the things I want to tell you is why are... now, 74 drinks is about 10 drinks a day and more on a weekend, okay? The way that this works is the products that are being sold. These are the highest alcohol content, highest potency, cheapest alcohol products in the world. I don't know if... can this be on?
Yep.
Okay. So this is one of the products. I'll put a couple of these out here. This one is 14% alcohol. There's nearly six drinks in that. These are less than two bucks. This one here, a primary choice of chronic alcohol abusers in Sioux Falls, nearly five drinks, five standard 12-ounce Budweisers in this can for a buck fifty. So if we do the math and we think about who is drinking these products, then where are they coming from? It's this store. There's a primary product that they sell, as well as cheap whiskey and cheap vodka, mostly small quantities, very cheap, very potent. And for... as evident, look around the neighborhood. What is littered around? It's this. Why are people passed out? Why are people passed out? If you drive by this neighborhood on a Monday morning at 10 o'clock, any Monday morning, you will see at least 14 people passed out in the neighborhood, on the sidewalks and in the parks, and it's due to these products. There's nobody that can drink this moderately unless you drink like half of it, put it in the fridge for tomorrow. It's not... Or save it for three days. These are products of abuse. People will point to personal responsibility. Where's the business responsibility? Where is the responsibility of our elected officials to make decisions about what people are selling and where, especially with this location being half a block, not even half a block, from the largest homeless shelter in Sioux Falls, and within just a stone's throw from the most vulnerable populations in our community? I think we've got to be considerate of that. There's responsible business, and then there are retail bad actors. This is one that is clearly... If you look at the data and you look at the cost and who's paying the tab, it's the taxpayers, it's the businesses in this area. It's not fair to us, it's not fair to our community, it's not fair to our police, it's not fair to our service providers. We spend a lot of money on services to try to help vulnerable populations in this area. This is a business, and these are products that are pouring gas on the challenges that we face in our community. I thank you for hearing me, and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. So Counselors, given the testimony you've heard, do you have any disclosures before a motion is introduced?
Mr. Chair. Now, as far as disclosures, I had a conversation with one of our city attorneys before the meeting as to... This is quasi-judicial, for people who don't know, meaning that as we are approaching this issue, if anything comes to us that might influence our vote, we're supposed to disclose that, just like you would, you know, if you're going into a court of law, a jury trial. So I did ask, you know, how far back does that apply, the quasi-judicial status? And I became involved with this back in June or July of last summer. So I'm not sure how long that goes, but I'm just going to give a little background of where I've been with this. I became aware of a problem back, again, June or July, when I saw on our agenda that Handyman was asking for a street vacation in their driveway on the west side of the building, and I thought, gee, that's kind of strange. And so I called the city, and they said, well, it's just a routine street vacation means closure. And I've learned in my three and a half years on the council, sometimes I try to go past just what I'm told by the city and reach into the constituency and see what their side is. In this case, I'm glad I did, because I called Handyman. I said, you know, just help me understand why you want to close a driveway. Well, then I got an earful from the manager at Handyman. So this is disclosure of what I'm hearing, and he starts to tell me the story of what's happening in their parking lot. And then I said, I'd like to come down and see this for myself. I, as a result of that, met several of the business owners down there, and some of the media got involved with it. And then I had an opportunity to go during the neighborhood watch picnic, so I visited about nine of those in August, and I went to a neighborhood in that area and heard from homeowners about the concerns that they have. And I see it, we've got the Bishop Dudley House here represented, and some of that came, you know, the Bishop Dudley House itself was getting somewhat blamed, so to speak, for this influx of behavior on the businesses. And we all support helping our homeless, and we understand that 99% of the people who pass through the Bishop Dudley House are being helped and are respectful. But there's this 1% that is causing the problems. Anyway, so I'm hearing from the businesses that there's a problem. I'm hearing from the homeowners, there's a problem. Bishop Dudley House, even, I've had conversations, just had one with Madeline Shields a few weeks ago, and the common denominator in all of these conversations has been this store, and the proximity of this particular establishment next to the Bishop Dudley House. And so we have a thing within our city, within the state liquor establishment, that we have something called Suitable Place, Suitable Person, or Suitable Location, Suitable Person. And I... So I will tell you, I've been hearing this testimony. It's in my judgment that this is not a suitable location for this kind of sales. Grocery's great. It used to be a gas station. That was a nice thing within the neighborhood. But having this close, I think, has been a problematic thing. So I pulled it, and I'm happy to have the discussion. I appreciate people who've come up and testified and shared how they feel about it. And I will say, it's not an easy thing to do, to come up and stand at that podium and speak. So... But we really appreciate hearing from citizens. So that's kind of the history of where I've been with this.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other disclosures? Yes, Counselor Knightzard.
Chairman.
Let's go. Yes, Counselor Brecky.
Thank you, Chairman Selberg. Yeah, just two similar disclosures. I was also involved and attended the same meetings that were held that Councilmember Staley attended, and then I have also had additional contact. In addition to that, I have talked to the people at face at Sioux Falls, including both Matt Walls and Dave Janz, as part of an ongoing conversation I've been having with them about, you know, overall alcohol policy throughout the city and kind of involving their expertise in those discussions. So I have had those communications.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Knightzard?
Yes, I met with... There was, I guess you'd call it kind of a public meeting at City Center, where there were a handful of counselors in attendance and people from the neighborhood who shared concerns, and it was discussed. Police were there. There was a second one at Our Wine Bar, which was a public forum that was open to anybody. It was another discussion where these concerns were discussed. I sat down and met with PD and discussed the issue probably about a week ago, and they followed up with an email to me, which has been posted on our online agenda management. And I did sit down with Madeline, the executive director of the Bishop Dudley House, and discussed the issue maybe about a month ago. And that would be probably my disclosures.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Starr?
I... Excuse me. It's an ongoing issue in the neighborhood that we have many discussions, whether it's... I have lunch just about every week at Bubba Jay's, and it's always a topic of discussion, what's going on in that part of the neighborhood. And I also attended the meeting with Counselor Knightzard and Counselor Staley at the City Center with the neighbors.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Okay, so based on the disclosures, is there any additional public testimony? Any other comments? If no, can I have a motion on the item?
I've got some questions.
Okay.
Do you want a motion first? I'll move to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'm going to second for discussion purposes, because I think we need to talk about it.
Well, you have to have a motion and the affirmative, so that's...
Yep.
You can still vote no. I have some questions, please. If I can... One, the question about bathrooms got brought up. I'd like to hear from the applicant. If the applicant is here, I'd like the applicant to address the... Talk about your business. Do you have bathrooms? What do you serve? What do you do? Is this a grocery store? Is this a bar? If the applicant could please come forward and discuss their business.
Welcome.
Hi. I guess it's a convenience store.
Come a little closer, so you can...
You can state your name for the record, too, please.
My name is Amabe, and then my mother, Almas. What was the question again?
Talk about your business. Can you tell me what your store is?
It started out as a gas station, and as far as the liquor, the last owner also used to sell liquor, so we just renewed our license. So we didn't start the whole alcohol. It's something that has been going, I guess. We just bought the license from the owner, I guess, yeah.
Do you only sell alcohol and beer?
No, we sell other Ethiopian stuff, like barley, spices, and stuff like that.
Do you have restrooms?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Are they open for public use?
Yeah, yep. When it's working, I guess, yeah.
What does that mean?
Well, sometimes it isn't working properly, then no, but yeah, when it's working. Sometimes it's down for maintenance, I guess.
How often would it be down for maintenance? I mean, it's my understanding, if you have a business, you have to have restrooms, and so that would be my question, is that common to not have the bathroom working?
It is working. I'm just saying, it has been down before.
Okay. Are you on sale and off sale, or just... Are you on sale alcohol or both? On sale and off sale? What is your license?
Both, I think. I'm not sure.
What do you mean? Jamie, maybe if you can help me too a little bit. My questions will probably be for both of you a little bit. Is this license on sale or off sale or both?
It's just off sale.
Just off sale? Okay, so...
It's off sale liquor, which means they can sell beer, wine, and spirits.
Right. Off sale.
Off sale only.
So do you allow people to consume beer and liquor on sale?
No, I'm sorry, I guess I didn't understand what the on sale and off sale meant.
On your property, do you allow people to consume alcohol?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay, I can tell you, I've physically driven by and witnessed.
Yeah, we've witnessed that before, too, but it's not under control. Like, we have tried to, you know, when we see it, we try to get them to move from that area, but it's not under control.
To across the street to another license, to another business, or where? I mean, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, my point of the question is, is if you're allowing people to...
We're not allowing, yeah.
Take one for the road, or how that works?
Well, that's not up to us. What we do is we sell the alcohol, but what they do with it after is not something we... Like I said, we just sell it. Yes, like you said, we have had people, homeless people, drink in the back, and we have told them many, many, many times, like, can't open beer can here.
Until you walk down the street?
What?
Until you walk down the street, or how does... How is it controlled? I'd like to know how you control this, because there's certainly concerns by many people in the public, and this isn't new.
We have the same problem, I guess, too, so it's... I don't know what... We haven't found a solution as far as... We can't stop them from drinking there, because we have told them many, many times, so...
I'll reserve the rest of my questions.
Any other Counselors have questions? Counselor Knightzard?
If they won't stop drinking, do you call the police or take any other action?
No, yeah. When they pass out, I have seen many people pass out. I mean, all the alcohol, not just from us. They can buy it from Marcato, walk and start drinking in the back of the alley from us. Because we don't sell to people that are drunk, obviously, and some of these people are drunk, and just because they're drinking behind our business doesn't mean they bought it from us. Yeah, because they can buy it anywhere else. The shelter is right next to us. The banquet is also right there, so they eat, and wherever they buy the beer, they still end up drinking it behind our business, so...
Have police given you suggestions, and have you implemented them?
Yeah. Yeah, they have, but she said she hasn't found a solution on what to do exactly.
So if you see people standing outside on your premises drinking alcohol, you try to get them to go?
We call the cops if they're drinking, because they don't listen to us, like I said.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Staley?
I've got a question for the Bishop Dudley House. Madeline, would you come up? If a person... If someone buys a beverage from them and they come to the Bishop Dudley, can they walk into the Bishop Dudley with that in their hand?
Absolutely not. They cannot be on the property of Bishop Dudley with any alcohol. If they are seen with alcohol on our property, they are immediately asked to leave. If they do not leave, the police will be called.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Kylie?
Do we have a member of our police force that is available to report the number of incidents and what has... What kind of discussions have been placed, taken place? The two of you can sit down. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Lieutenant John Toome with the Sioux Falls Police Department. I guess historically, I'm currently Lieutenant of Support Services. However, for my 14-year career, I've worked primarily that neighborhood, and since 2015 have been a sergeant up until my promotion, working on these issues and working in that neighborhood pretty regularly. I guess I have some figures. I have some specifics you can give me if you just want to ask questions.
Yeah, if you can give us some of the figures involved with complaints and violations, that would be very helpful.
Sure. Traditionally, we just went back to 2017. 197 calls for service in 2017. 2018, 256 calls for service, and in 2019, 219 up to this far, probably on pace to be last year's number as well. These run a whole gambit of different violations, but the primary theme would be, excuse me, either disorderly subjects or intoxicated subjects, and they kind of go hand in hand for both those offenses, and there's some other ones in there, too. But it's obviously a regular stop for patrol officers as they perform their duties.
Lieutenant, in your opinion, if this license were not renewed, there's a number of other establishments right there on Indiana. I'm not sure if they have off sale. Maybe you can enlighten me on that. For instance, Nicky's, La Mexicana, Bubba Jay's, Phil's, do they have off sale also?
Nicky's has off sale, and we don't have as many issues at Nicky's as we do in other areas within that region.
There's a convenience gas station located just three blocks to the east. That would be off sale, obviously.
J and K, quick stop, I believe.
What about the Red Sea Pub and the Ohio Tavern on Eighth Street, which is just a...
It's just on sale.
Just on sale. Would we be potentially moving a problem from one location to another?
There's a larger discussion about it, the role of alcoholism within society and the issues that this population faces. It may be, we as the police department are not naive to think that if alcohol was stopped being served here, they're not going to seek it out somewhere else, right? There's a bigger issue at play that I think is one for society, right? But again, the chronic alcohol abuser will seek out alcohol, and that's a safe statement.
I don't have any other questions for Lieutenant, unless anybody else. I do have some follow-up comments I'd like to make at the appropriate time.
Go ahead, Counselor Knightzard.
To your knowledge, with the police's, do you know if the applicant has been found to knowingly be letting people drink on their premises?
For years, we have had numerous conversations about alcohol is not to be consumed on that property and steps to be taken. I've never witnessed anybody give consent to drink, if you will. However, I personally have observed and dealt with numerous people drinking alcohol on that property.
Would you characterize most of the reports as coming... Are they making most of the police calls, or are they coming from elsewhere?
When we gathered the stats, it's a pretty relevant issue, and so, for example, in 2017, of 197 calls, 122 were officer-initiated. These are officers going by, identifying problems, and dealing with them. In 2018, of the 256, 167 were officer-initiated, and in 2019, of the 217, 162 were officer-initiated. Other calls do come from passersby or other people as they come through. I couldn't pinpoint for you an exact number of if Walea has called these in or not. We've told them numerous times to help us, help you, more or less, to help us enforce these issues, even help them post some no trespassing signs at one point. It's just a repeated issue, and about I said, a lot of the enforcement action that's being taken is, I officers proactively patrol in the area and dealing with it, but there's only so much we can be and how often we can be there.
You stated that you've talked to them numerous times. Have you found them to be cooperative, helpful to take your suggestions?
They're very cooperative with me as far as our face-to-face interactions. I'm welcome within their store. If there's assistance, I've asked for a trash bag before to help pick up stuff. They provided that. I've asked them to come pick it up and they've picked it up and they've done different things. But this is, again, a year-to-year repeated issue that, that we've dealt with. And again, is categorized by the numbers and how often we're there. These even stretch back to well before when it was arts. It's, if you know the neighborhood, you know that this corner has been a single-serve alcohol location for, for many, many years.
Thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lieutenant, help me a little bit. Where, where do you see the tipping point in the calls for service when it becomes a problem? I know that's subjective, but these are numbers that should be alarming to, to most license holders.
There is no magic number. If we look at historically within our community, we dealt with similar issues in the Mercado area, at Leventhain Duluth and, and actions or measures were taken there. However, things have changed in the city as far as the, the population base and where the centralized goods and services are for that region. And then the population that, that resides there and the, the alcohol issues that are very, very prevalent. Like I said, it's a bigger societal issue. We talk about alcoholism and the impact of alcohol, especially among vulnerable populations. But it, it is well-known within the neighborhood. And we've, I feel, policed that area well enough to know that there's certain points and certain locations that we know attract a higher level of calls of service.
Well, I guess my concern is, and I, I should probably wait, but you brought up the Mercado is a perfect... In, in that neighborhood, it gets into the thousands of calls. So if we denied this, I think we're obligated to deny, start denying a lot of licenses in town when, when maybe we get to that magic number of 200 or somewhere in that thing. So I think we have a, that seems to be an identifiable problem once it gets past 150 calls for service.
I would be, in that matter, my opinion wouldn't, wouldn't really carry much weight. That's a bigger issue for city councilors and for the city government to look at as, as it's, like I said, a complex issue at best, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Sale?
Thank you. I have a question for Jamie, if I could, please. Jamie, what is the value of this liquor license?
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. A package liquor license is sold from the city for $500.
So if, if this is denied based on a suitable location, they could take this license and go to a different location and start selling?
Well, if this license is just denied, it comes back to the city.
It just comes back to the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kylie?
Jamie, as long as you're there, can you define... We, we make these judgments based on suitable person, suitable location. Can you define those, please?
Well, suitable person, according to state law, is... Better grab it so I don't misquote it.
Thank you.
South Dakota state law 35-2-6.2, character requirements for licenses. Any licensee under this title shall be a person of good moral character, never convicted of a felony, and if a corporation and managing officers of the corporation shall meet the same qualifications.
And location?
Location isn't clearly defined in state law, not like this.
So that is fairly ambiguous. So it doesn't necessarily mean that it would have to be that it's close to a park or it's close to a school or close to a church?
Right.
We as a council can determine what suitable location is?
Yep, and I don't know if Keith has anything to add to that, but it isn't clearly defined as, as the person, so.
Is our, is our city attorney ready to weigh in on that? Keith, thank you. Thanks, Jamie. Good job.
Keith Alstine, City Attorney's Office. It is not, as Ms. Palmer indicated, it's not in, in statute, but there is some case law that does give us some, some guidance. If I can get back to it now. So there's a couple of cases in the state of South Dakota that have discussed suitable person. And the council does have a fair amount of discretion in that area. But business model, the available police resources to respond, the number of problems that have been there, all can figure into suitable location. So those are just, it's not an exhaustive list, but suitable location is not as, as constricted as the suitable person.
Business model is something that can be considered.
Absolutely. Prior problems as well. There's some of the case laws out of, out of Mead County, Buffalo Chip area. Some of the problems they run into underage drinking, nudity, the inability for, to be able to police the area appropriately, things like that, they said were all valid considerations for suitable location.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I would have one other question and it might be for Counselor Staley. When were the owners notified that this was going to be pulled? Was it?
I believe last week.
Last week? Jamie, if you could come up?
Yeah, I did phone the owner last Friday and then I phoned her again today.
And how did that conversation go?
I encouraged her that she might want to be at this meeting as there was some comments made to me that there was going to be lots of questions, not only from the council, council, but maybe from the public. And so I did inform her of that and, and told her that she would probably want to be here.
Do you know if there was ever any discussion about them potentially having legal counsel present to represent them as well?
I did not suggest that, no.
Yes. If I could call the owners forward and ask that question? Did you consider having any legal representation here this evening? Any attorneys, lawyers to represent your side of the, this issue?
My mother-
Can you come a little closer to the microphone?
And pull those down a little bit, please.
There you go.
Yes, my mother is planning on talking to somebody. She hasn't got an attorney yet, but yeah, she's thinking about it.
Well, after this evening is a little bit late.
Well, she didn't understand exactly what was going on, I guess. She just went by the plate. I guess she just spoke with her today and last Friday, so I haven't come up with a solution yet.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, you know, based, based on that, I, I will have to say that this is not representative of what I would like to see in ownership of, of an establishment of any time that sells and distributes alcohol. But considering the fact that they seem to be somewhat ill-prepared to represent themselves, I'm going to suggest that we defer this item to December 3rd, which gives them two weeks to get their ducks in a row. But again, just to make it very clear, I have some very grave concerns about this establishment as well. There's been a, a long history of, of issues. The business model presented, I don't know that there was a business model presented, but I, I do, because it's much of your livelihood, I think it's only fair to the individuals to, to have an, an opportunity to better prepare themselves. Thank you.
Second, Erickson.
Okay. So a motion made in a second by Erickson. Further comment? Counselor Staley, I know you had your hand up next.
Jamie? A question, and maybe, no, maybe you don't. You said $500 for the, the new license, but they purchased it from Art, it sounds like, from that, the old business. So, and maybe I should ask them what, I mean, if we're just talking about the value of what it was worth, maybe, would you come up, or do you, do you know offhand what they would have paid for it or?
I believe that was transferred before my time in this position, so I'm, I'm not sure if they purchased that or it must have been transferred.
Okay, well, I mean, because that's, I understand that's a consideration as to what, what they're losing. But also, if we're talking, I guess, I, Counselor Starr, you're talking about this decision being based on the amount of police calls. And that, I'm not going to, I, I was not comparing it to, to another place with heavier police calls because, again, I, I think that this is unique because it's, it's so close to the Bishop Dudley and all this, this compound, we're forming this compound to service these, these people. The banquet and, and, Jamie, I, yeah, I think I'm, okay. So, so this, to me, is unique. It's not the same as some strip mall that has some casinos next to it and bars and whatever. It's, it's this specific location.
Mr. Chair, the motion on the floor is to defer. We should act on that motion before we debate the merits of the main motion.
But does that shut the conversation down?
We have to talk about whether to defer this, since that's the motion on the floor. Whether to defer it, if that passes, then, then the discussion is deferred to the third. If it does not pass, we discuss the merits of the main.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, so we'd call for a vote?
No, she can still debate.
I, I still have some questions before I vote to defer it. I think I can still ask some questions.
My understanding, and maybe the Parliament here can help me, that we should define and, and limit our discussion to the motion to defer, not the merits of the license. So that's all we're talking about at this point. Do we pass it to the third or we discuss it today?
Tom?
I, I would just say that if there are questions, that would help the counselor inform her decision as to whether to move it to the third or not, then they would be valid questions.
Thank you.
But just with a view towards a deferral vote.
Well, I wanted to have the applicant come forward. Can you tell them, do you know how much you paid for your license? You don't, okay. And, and just, just one more thing I'm going to say. When we were talking about putting that pizza place in at Waltz in 26th Street, there was discussion about whether we should have alcohol in a pizza place in, in that old laundromat area. So we certainly do have discussions about what's appropriate for an alcohol facility in our community.
Counselor Neitzert?
I'll try to weave this into the deferral discussion. I, I, I'm not sure I would support a deferral, although I, I see the idea because I'm not going down the road of the suitable person. I'm going to the suitable location. You have a vulnerable population and would you have this establishment right next to the services that are provided? And regardless of who would be running this particular business model, that's where my, my major concern comes. So I'm, I'm conflicted about deferring it, knowing that, you know, but obviously they have a business and it's not even necessarily so much the $500. I'm sure as much as if you lost the license, then obviously you may, you may be out of business. The other thing I do, I do, I do want to say is, I do not just look at calls for service and just take it at face value. You have to do a deeper dive. And we learned this, I learned this when I first got on the council. If, if you have, let's say, a, a bar who has got a ton of police calls, that in and of itself is not the final determination. You've got to find out who's making the calls. If they're making all of the calls because they are policing their place really, really well, that's far different than if they're not making the calls and the calls are coming from police initiated and they're not doing their, doing their business. So you have to do, so you just can't look at numbers and just say, there's 400, therefore they're a bad actor. So anyway, I, I'm conflicted by the deferral because for me, it's not about the personality, it's the suitable location issue.
Counselor Erickson?
I am going to support the deferral, but I want to caution any of us to referring to this neighborhood as a compound. I take great, great offense to calling this a compound. People live here, people do business here. We are talking about access to service, addiction, and again, homes and businesses. We cannot be calling these neighborhoods a compound.
Counselor Kylie?
Jamie, could you come forward because one important question that I failed to ask. When does the present license expire? Does the, would the deferral put it beyond the expiration date?
No, the current license that they hold will expire December 31st at midnight.
Very good, thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, I, I'm not excited about deferring this. I, I think we need to move forward, but I, I can see it's very obvious we're talking about someone's livelihood and that if they are asking or want the ability to talk to counsel and be represented, this, on normal things, I might not be as lenient. But I think on this one, that, that we need to be a little bit lenient if they're asking for counsel because it is a quasi-judicial procedure that we're having this evening. And I think giving them the ability to be represented by counsel, I think, would make it a little bit clearer exactly what we're, actions we're going to take tonight. And a couple of weeks will allow them to do that. And the, the problems haven't been created in a couple of weeks. And two, I know I want to fix things as fast as we can, but this is one where I, I think deferrals merited.
Counselor Neitzert?
The counselor makes a good point. I think for due process, simply, and to make sure that everybody's covered, a deferral would be probably well-advised.
Counselor Staley?
Just let me clarify, I'll, I'll change the word "compound" to a consolidation of homeless services, which is really, we've got, we really did, there was an effort made to put everything together. And, and there's even talk about having other things there, where that, the old Chinese restaurant McDonald's was. So it, it is, it's a consolidated area that has a much more intense presence to service the homeless than any other place in our town. And just like, I guess we would probably be having the same conversation if we had something like this set up by the Glory House. I don't know that we would allow a business like this to be right next to the Glory House. So I will re, I will restate that as consolidation of services to the homeless.
Well, let's call for a vote on the deferral. On the deferral, Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to nothing. So move to the next item?
Next item, item 27, new 2019-20 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Best Western Glow Sioux Falls. 1211 South Darrow Place, CUP not required, pending final inspections per fire, health and building services. 28, new 2019-20 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Happy Jacks 2B. 4823 South Louise Avenue, Suite 101, CUP not required, pending plan review per building services. Item 29, request to include video lottery terminals with the new 2019-20 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Happy Jacks 2B, 4823 South Louise Avenue, Suite 101, cup not required, pending plan review per building services. Item 30, new 2019-20 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Happy Jacks 4B. 1213 East Benson Road, CUP not required, pending plan review per building services. Item 31, request to include video lottery terminals with the new 2019-20 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Happy Jacks 4B. 1213 East Benson Road, CUP not required, pending plan review per building services. Item 32, new 2019-20 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Chance Casino 5503 North Cliff Avenue, with conditional use permit 10515-2019 being approved on September 4th, 2019, pending plan review per building services. Item 33, request to include video lottery terminals with the new 2019-20 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Chance Casino 5503 North Cliff Avenue, with conditional use permit being approved on September 4th, 2019, pending plan review per building services. Item 34, transfer of 2019-20 retail malt beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License and transfer of 2019 retail wine license from Suakati Brothers LLC Himalayan Indian Cuisine, 5310 East Arrowhead Parkway to Kathmandu Indian Cuisine LLC. Kathmandu Indian Cuisine, 5310 East Arrowhead Parkway, full-service restaurant, CUP not required, pending final inspection per health. Item 35, special one-day wine license for Wine Time on Main to be operated at the Washington Square 8th Floor Common Area. 350 South Main Avenue for wine education on December 4th, 2019. Item 36, special one-day liquor license for JJ Wine Spirits and Cigars to be operated at the Sanford Event Barn, 2510 East 54th Street North. And item 37, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine license for Stockyards Plaza Incorporated to be operated at Stockyards Ag Experience Barn, 301 East Falls Park Drive for a private social on December 9th, 2019.
Hello again.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions on items 27 through 37. And also, I'm going to need to request an amendment to items 30 and 31 to include a suite 102 with their address. That was added after this item was put on the agenda. So it would read 1213 East Benson Road, Suite 102. the agenda. So it would read 1213 East Benson Road, Suite 102 for both items 30 and 31, if you would so kindly make that amendment.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to any of these items?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items 27 through 37.
Second.
Okay. Motion's to approve by Kylie, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Do we amend it?
Okay. So what am I doing now?
I'll make a motion to amend items 30 and 31 by adding suite 102 after 1213 East Benson Road.
Second, Neitzert.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Neitzert. Vote on the amendment?
On the amendment, Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Counselor, any, what?
On the amended main motion. So we need to vote on the amended main motion. Okay, so a call for a vote on the amended main motion. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. So questions for Jamie? I think we're good. Are you good to go? Okay. Onto the next item?
Item 38, second reading deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, September 17, 2019, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations for bike trail development, parks, and recreation, $200,000.
Counselor Neitzert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a discussion about amending our capital plan to add in design and engineering money for bike trail development and expansion. It's been a couple of months since we talked about this, so I'm just going to have a really short presentation. This is the, essentially, the master corridor plan for what they would call the West Side Bike Trail, the Cherry Creek Trail Corridor. And we are talking about the first phase of that extension. Right now, the bike trail on the West Side ends at Legacy Park near 12th and Surtoma. This is what we're talking about, both the red and the yellow. The red is identified as the first priority and the yellow would be the second priority. And whether they would be done together in the same year or in multiple phases would really depend probably a lot on simple budgets. Phase one is Legacy Park to Songbird Street, which is right up to the end of the red there, which will connect that Hayward neighborhood, which would be a great neighborhood to have direct connectivity to the bike trail. And phase two would be a spur that would head over to Family Park. The requested supplemental would fund the design and engineering of that phase. The funding source would be a portion of the 2018 capital surplus. It currently stands at about $474,000. That request is to appropriate $200,000 of the capital surplus, and we would add $200,000 to the 2019 Parks and Recreation budget. It would require no cuts to current projects because we would be using supplemental appropriated money. On September 20th, or 10th, 2019, we were significantly impacted by three tornadoes. The damage has been assessed and the repairs are underway. The repairs were funded out of operating dollars, so there's no capital funds necessary. That 60-day deferral was necessary so we could make sure that we did not need those capital dollars for more urgent needs. So the 2018 capital surplus has been unspent. The timeline would be a proposed construction start in 2021 if things work out. If you remember at the budget adoption, we amended in the CIP the construction 2021. Obviously, we need to do the design and engineering first. If we were to approve this, they could get started as soon as possible, but realistically, it'd probably happen in 2020, which would be perfect. They need about a year to do the designing and then be able to start the construction early in the next year. Even if the construction timeline shifts, the money would be well-spent. We don't have to do the construction immediately. The plans will still be valid. That question had come up before. And I would obviously request you to approve the supplemental appropriation and continued bike trail expansion. We know that bike trails are a huge priority for citizens, and this is a chance to keep that momentum going. And I would also point out that the Northwest District is accelerating in development, and it's really poised to explode with the new high school being built right now. And with that, you're going to see a lot of homes starting to pop up, and this is going to be an important corridor to start to serve and to eventually connect back to the main bike trail and really get that West Side direct connectivity. And I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item?
Greetings. I'm David Sokitis, and I'm all in favor of parks and the bike trail. Definitely, the more, the better. My concern is for flooding. Our current bike trail in springtime, lots of parts get underwater because the big Sioux rises and the bike trail's lower than the elevation of the water. So my request is that the city Parks Department consider flooding an elevation in this design work so that the bike trail that they build is useful more often than the one that we have now.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Greg Boras. I live in Sioux Falls. I work over on 22nd and Grange. I live over by the horses on 57th and Southeastern. And I use the bike trail to get to work about half the time during the year for my job. I have also been very active in the MPO with the Citizens Advisory Committee, having chaired that for many years. And I'm just here to say, this is an important thing to make sure we have access to the facilities of our community, the parks, the schools, the neighborhoods. And I'm really glad to see this coming forward and making sure that we take advantage of the fact that we are in the flood plain to be able to recognize that. Sometimes, we have to find alternative routes, as I had to from where I lived to where I had to go to work. So I encourage your support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I used to be very much into bicycling. I've gone cross-country, and that was a regular form of transportation of mine. But I've been hit by cars a couple of times, and that's partly why I am so unable to get around so well anymore. Now, I figure if we're going to increase the, you know, and put money into the bike trail, then we've got to get to the bike trail on a bike, and cars do get in the way. So I would think, I would hope that you would consider slowing down the cars, limit their speed, and this would also maybe tax them some more. And that would make driving motor vehicle less convenient, and people would be more inclined to get on a bicycle and join the rest of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Heinel, 205 South Menlo Avenue. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity for speaking here tonight. Just wanted to urge you to vote to fully fund this trail because, as Counselor Neitzert said, it is a critical link for the adjacent neighborhoods around there, for people to be able to commute for transport. I, myself, don't have a car anymore. I choose that to be true. But other people don't have that option, and they don't have that availability. So getting the things that they need, this is a huge opportunity for them to be able to do that because then they can get to the grocery stores, which there are none. So it's a good opportunity to provide equal access, equitable decision-making for this body. And it's a step forward in the right direction and continues to make our community more healthy and more inclusive for everyone to live here and live, work, and play. And I thank you for your time. I'll stand by any questions.
Thank you.
Bruce Danielson. I happen to live out in that neighborhood, and I've always wanted to have the bike trail come nearby. So I am kind of interested in this thing all coming together. But I would like to set the record straight on a few things that have been said here tonight, that the bike trail is an amenity that we have because in following the flooding of Sioux Falls in 1969, the flooding of Rapid City in 1972, the Susquehanna Valley flooding that happened in the mid-'70s, Representative Denholm and Representative Flood from Pennsylvania worked with Senator Aberesque and Senator McGovern's offices to establish the River Greenways. We now have that band that goes through Sioux Falls, like they did in Rapid City, like they did through the Susquehanna Valley where I lived, to be our storm sewer system, so that we didn't overtax the sanitary sewer system. So when people want to raise the bike trail so that we, that we don't flood the bike trail in certain times of the year, we're defeating the absolute purpose for the entire project. All we have is a park system that can go alongside the river because of these smart people that work together in Washington, DC to get us the money so that we can have a storm sewer that actually works here. And if you lived here in 1969 or were in the area during that flooding, it was miserable. And we saw some flooding this past year, and it would have been much worse had we not had those people 40 years ago doing the work that we now take for granted. So I just want to make sure that people understand the bike trail and the park system are just amenities so that we can live here and not be flooded out. Thank you.
Anybody else? I would look for a motion to approve the item?
Move approval, Neitzert.
Second, Erickson.
Motion by Neitzert, seconded by Erickson. Discussion, counselors. Yes, Counselor Starr?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to commend Counselor Neitzert. He's been a great proponent of the bike trail in his district, and it's done a nice job. We've talked about it in several ways to find the capital money to move this project forward, and it seems to get delayed every year. And his tenacity has been what it's taken to keep this moving forward. I'd like to see this to continue on. We have the right of way all the way out to the USD Discovery District and in that area, but this is a small step in design and keeping it moving forward. So thank you for your tenacity to keep this project moving.
Nice. Counselor?
And I really do appreciate that. And I will tell you, I've not forgotten the east side. I'm watching the east side as we go out to Great Bear, and that is in the plan, and we want to make sure it stays there. And we're going in both directions because we have a city that's grown, and we want to continue that bike trail to provide access to as many people in the city as possible. So let's keep the march going both directions. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. I would ask for a roll call vote to approve, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Okay. That passes eight to zero. Next item?
The next item is item 50, which was moved by motion earlier, deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, September 17, 2019, a resolution amending the 2019-2023 capital program to add funding to CIP project number 14002 Bike Trail Development.
Counselor Neitzert?
Thank you. Now that the money has been appropriated, we just need to amend the capital plan to match that appropriation. And so this goes in tandem with what we just did. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? If not, would look for a motion to approve?
So moved, Neitzert.
Second, Erickson.
Motion made by Neitzert, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion? Okay. Would look for a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 39, second reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the naming of a facility on public property, Premier Club.
Welcome, Russ.
Good evening. Chair President Selberg, City Councilor, Sioux Falls. My name is Russ Sorensen with the City of Sioux Falls Planning Office. This evening, I have representatives from ASM Global Sioux Falls, Mr. Rick Huffman and Jim Johnson in the audience. For your consideration, this evening is the second reading of an ordinance for an application that was submitted by ASM Global Sioux Falls on behalf of First Premier Bank and Premier Bank Card to the city for naming a certain space within the Denny Sanford Premier Center. The Premier Club would be a private club lounge located on the main concourse level within the Premier Center. The Premier Club would be a private club lounge for private seat holders, and it sits center ice on the south side of the main concourse overlooking the arena floor. Access to this 2,655 square foot area will feature a private bar with a patio and a drink rail area overlooking the main floor. Brand logo and signage on the zone fascia with the inner bowl visibility for events, along with a signage would be provided. The proposed term and the investment is a five-year marketing partnership between the Denny Sanford Premier Center and the First Premier Bank Card. That totals $200,000 and would begin December 1 of 2019 and go through November 30 of 2024. In October of this year, the city naming committee considered the naming application and unanimously recommends approval. There have been no public comments received on this city naming request.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the public who would like to speak on this item? Counselors, any questions? Counselor Neitzert?
Russ, you mentioned this was a five-year, $200,000 agreement. Could you remind us what the previous agreement with Cambria was?
Previous agreement with Club Cambria was a three-year term at $85,000 total, so it is a significant increase.
Yeah. And I wanted to highlight that, that I, you know, whoever's responsible for that much of an increase, that's great job, and that's what helps to provide the, you know, the revenues to help keep it operating in the black. So thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Erickson?
Russ, what happens to all the furniture and the countertops and all of that? Does that go with Cambria, or does it stay there? Because when it was originally built and then we changed the sponsorship and the material changed, that was a little controversial as far as waste was concerned. So what happens with this?
I'm going to defer that to our applicant. They've been in discussions with the, with that organization.
You can't sit there all night without saying something.
Rick Huffman, Director of Sales and Public Relations at the Denny Sanford Premier Center. And everything will stay. There won't be any further modifications of that space.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, counselors? Can we get a motion?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item?
Item 40, second reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the naming of a facility space on public property, Bud Light Lounge.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself. I have a family member that works for Anheuser-Busch.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Shawna Goldammer with Planning and Development Services. Similar to item 39, we have another naming here for the Bud Light Lounge. Beal Distributing is one of the signature partners.
The Comfort Zone, and that agreement has expired, and the space is currently unnamed.
The new proposed Bud Light Lounge will be located on the main concourse within the Premier Center. The Bud Light Lounge sits at the west end of the main concourse overlooking the arena floor, facing the concert stage in a position on the east end. The public access to the 1,755 square foot area will be from an oval-shaped bar and a rail overlooking the arena floor. Branding name and logo signage on the zone fascia will be within the inner bowl of the visitability for events, along with channel cut lettering at the zone entrance, and it is to be provided. This contract totals $240,000 in fees, and that equals to $80,000. This contract totals $240,000 in fees, and that equals to $80,000 over a three-year period ending in December 2022. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Also, Rick Huffman, as you know, and Jim Johnson from ASMG Global are here this evening to answer questions as well.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item?
Russ Danielson, something occurred to me with the last one that was just done and with this one that's just being done, is if we have a 20-day publication clock that starts with the publication this coming Saturday, that would put it sometime in the middle of December before the agreement would be able to be, would commence. Something doesn't seem right in the scheduling, so I just thought I'd bring it up.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselors, do you have any questions for staff?
I do.
Counselor Starr.
I guess, how does it take effect December 1st if we're just approving it tonight and the publication date?
Sorry, is it effective January 1st, 2020 is when it ends, in December 31st, 2022?
Okay. The previous one, I think.
And it is subject to city council approval.
Okay. Any other questions? You get a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Sale.
Second, Kylie. Motion to approve by Sale, seconded by Kylie. Any more discussion? Call for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitschert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Pass is seven to zero. Next item.
Item 41, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of West 47th Street and east of South Western Avenue from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density Districts to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, number 11297-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Set a date of second, the recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019.
Welcome, Albert.
Evening, Council Albert Schmidt, City of Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services. So this item here, the owner applicant is Lifescape, or sorry, the applicant is Lifescape. The owner is Greta Carter, located again west of 47th Street and east of South Western Avenue, so just to the west of this is Western Avenue, this goes up kind of near the Shields area. Size is approximately .37 acres, and the purpose of this is actually to build a two-unit community residential home for Lifescape. And so this has a rezone of a portion, as you can see on the comparison, one area, the RA, where they currently own to the south, that they'll incorporate into this lot to make it big enough for the two-unit community home they're planning. I'll take any questions you have.
All right. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak to this item? Counselors, any question for staff? Move to approve?
I'll second. Nitschert?
To approve by Kylie, seconded by Nitschert. Any other debate? Look for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitschert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Pass is eight to zero. Next item.
Item 42, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of West 12th Street and west of South Ellis Road from the AG Agriculture District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, and RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density Districts, number 11271-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019.
The owner applicant on this one is Doug Allen with Allen Development LLC. It's located south of West 12th Street and west of South Ellis Road. Its size is approximately 42 acres, and the purpose is a new residential subdivision with single-family homes, townhomes, and apartment residential. We haven't received any neighborhood comments. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this item?
David Tsokitis, last time tonight. We talk now and again about affordable housing, and one of the reasons why there's a shortage of affordable housing in the city is because new zoning developments are residential suburban, and we've forgotten about residential traditional. Residential suburban is big houses, big lots, big money. Residential traditional, smaller houses, smaller lots, less money, more affordable. And if you want to make more affordable housing, you have to make more of one and less of the other, and we could do that with zoning if anybody was interested.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselors, any questions for staff? Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019.
Second.
Motion made by Nitschert, seconded by Erickson. Any other discussion? Ask for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr? Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitschert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Pass is seven to zero. Next item.
Item 43, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 3920 South Hawthorne Avenue from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the O Office District, number 11270-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019.
The owner applicant on this one is Brent Norgard with Celebrate Community Church for the Northwest District of Wesleyan Church. Location is 3920 South Hawthorne Avenue. The size is approximately 1.62 acres, and the purpose of this rezoning is to build three small residential, or sorry, three small retail buildings on the site there. I'll take any questions you may have. We haven't received any public comments or concerns.
Okay, thanks, Albert. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counselors, any questions for staff? Counselor Sale?
Just thank you. Albert, remind me of the proposal that was on this property that was withdrawn.
So March 6, 2019, we had a proposal, same zoning district. It was going to be for a dance studio. They withdrew the application after they had some concerns on that specific site property, so they no longer wanted to pursue their location for that use. So everything otherwise was full recommendation of approval, no neighborhood concerns for that use, so that zoning at that time either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Nitschert.
Okay, so we're rezoning a piece to O Office, correct? Remind, what retail forms are allowed, RE1, 2, 3?
RE1, yeah.
Just one. So what is that, 4,000 square feet, just a small commercial?
So it's limited to each building, every 4,000 square feet. It's limited to hours as well, kind of similar to the pizza restaurant we talked about with USF. So you have a 4,000 square feet, no drive-through, and your hours are limited. I apologize, I think it's like to 10:00 PM at night, usually Monday through Friday.
Yeah, limited retail. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion to set a date for second reading for Tuesday, December 3?
So moved, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Motion made by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any more discussion? Vote, please. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie? Nitschert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Pass is seven to zero. Next item.
Item 44, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located west of Highway 11 and south of East 57th Street from the AG Agriculture District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar LW-LW Live Work, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, RS Single Family Residential Suburban Districts, number 11237-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019.
The applicant owner on this one is Brady Hyde with Pals LLC. It's located west of Highway 11 and south of 57th Street, just south of the 57th Street access from Harmadon Park, just to the north there. The size is the largest one of this evening at 117.41 acres, and the purpose is for new subdivision, mainly residential. You'll have mostly single-family townhome and apartments in this area, but there will be some commercial and office along 57th Street, as you can kind of see there from the rezoning petition.
All right, okay. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this item? Counselors, any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Starr.
Albert, help me, that's, that's pretty low, isn't it? I know that's the highly technical term for it, but I mean, there's going to have to be some pretty serious dirt work to do that, or am I?
So there is a channel for drainage and water that goes through this area. The applicant has been working on it since prior to purchasing of that, and so they're working through the FEMA process to actually get that area regulated for waterways to protect against potential residential damage during water events. And so they are very aware of that, and so with this map, they're kind of making it to show what could be developed, and then they're fine-tuning the exact location of that area, then you'll see the development build around that area and stay out of that area, then eventually either through the city or the applicant, that area will get rezoned to probably Conservation District.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Other question, Counselor Nitschert.
So just to align me, I, so is the south entrance of Harmadon Park right, right there above the C2? Is that where we're at?
Yeah, it's kind of to the right half of C2, and that area, it's kind of north of that area.
Yeah, where it says Park Service, and that stuff to the, to the right of the Live Work, that's really C4 and I1? Is that because it's up against the Highway 100 corridor?
Currently, it's zoned that way, yes. It's not built out that way, but it is currently zoned that way.
Okay, and just for everybody's benefit, whenever I'm seeing Live Works come through now, I'm looking really close at them to see where are they falling in terms of what is your surrounding land uses, because we've had a few issues, and it's a hard one to figure out what to do about it, but you've got that, you've got that apartment form, the MD, MD2, I want to say?
Yeah.
Yeah, the MD2 that you can do up to three stories, and we've had, sometimes we have the issue where the Live Work goes in, and it might be discussed that, well, we might do an office, and then it gets changed to a three-story apartment, and nobody saw it coming. In this case, to sum up, I don't see any real high conflict potential because you have some pretty intense uses around it, but I always will be looking at that going forward. So, thanks.
Any other questions? Can we get a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019?
So moved, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Motion made by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any other discussion? Call for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie? Nitschert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Pass is seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 45, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the northeast corner of West Madison Street and North Valley View Road from the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density O Office, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban Districts, number 11135-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019.
Albert, you're hot.
Last one tonight for you from me. The applicant is Leith Urbolt from Signature Companies. The owner is Clint Ackerman from Aspen Heights LLC. It's located kind of near the northwest corner of West Madison Street and North Valley View Road, which, as you all know, is just west along Madison Street and, or just, just west along Madison, north along Madison Street, west of Marion Street, Rain Road, excuse me. The size on this overall location is 16.43 acres, and the purpose is actually, I would consider it downzoning. They're going from the RA2, the O, and the C2 to actually RS Single Family and RD2 Townhomes. The RD2 section, you can see they're planning to put some fourplexes in that location, to kind of between the existing fourplexes and the street down there, and that's kind of changing overall. I'll take any questions. We haven't had any concerns or comments from any of the neighbors out there, either.
Thanks, Albert. Anybody from the public like to speak to this item? Counselors, any questions for Albert? Can we get a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3?
So moved, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Motion made by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any other discussion? Call for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley? Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie? Nitschert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Next item.
Item 46, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota declaring certain real property to the city's surplus and approving offer to purchase and development agreement. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019.
Welcome, Director.
Good evening, Counselors, Jeff Akoff, Planning and Development Services. We are before you tonight with two, asking for a second reading on two items. This is the Jeff Sursec project on the Rail Yard redevelopment site that he, we did informational about a month ago about this project. The first item I'm going to present to you is the offer to purchase on the parcel, oh, I'm sorry. Just as a little orientation, if you remember, the Rail Yard sites are divided into five, excuse me, parcels. Tonight, we're talking about Parcels B and C, and the offer to purchase is on Parcel C, which is bordered on the south by 8th Street. As you can see, it's been divided into two tracks, and if you're following it through the language of the contracts, they refer to it as Lot 1 and Lot 2, just for reference. A little overview about the project is reminder, it's a 13 million dollar project, 71,000 square foot with about 7,500 dedicated to office and retail, and 42 apartments on three, three and a half levels total on the project. We talked a lot that evening. Jeff, of course, as you know, is a very passionate Sioux Falls advocate, known for the quality of his development, and we very spoke at length about the quality and the type of development that we were expected to see. We're excited about it. It leverages the other developments in that area, and in particular, the project that Larry Howell is doing with East Bank Depot, along with 8th and Railroad, and it continues to push development towards the core, and that's what we're really excited about, getting in the first parcel of the Rail Yard. Just another view of Jeff's project from the street, looking at a straight north of looking at a straight north of Main Street. That'll be the front and on two levels will be the retail and the office development. There's connectivity. That's a bird's eye view to in-between into the courtyard between Larry's project and this one. And it'll be heavily amenitized with landscaping and art. He already has talked to, as you remember, Sculpture Walk, about placing a couple sculptures in there. I think the actual plan will be a little bit wider than that, but it'll be a beautiful courtyard that people can connect between the two projects. And that finally is a view. If you're staying on the north end of that courtyard, looking south, that's a type of view, gives you an idea of the amenities, excuse me, the landscaping. I picked up a cold this weekend, I'm sorry. The next slide talks about the terms of the sale. As you remember, we've negotiated $10 a square foot on 67,000 square feet for a total sale price of $678,700. There's a strip along the right side that we'll see in the next slide where we will, the city will build the bike path at such time as the north parcel develops. We intend to close on the lot, on this sale, by December 31st. And there you'll see a better layout of the site plan. You'll see where the bike path runs along the east side of the property, parallel to the old rail, to the existing rail lines. Along with the, the offer to purchase is a development agreement. If you remember, when we sell land, we put a development agreement and ask the developer to do certain things and to meet our standards of building and lays out more detail on the terms. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dustin and have him talk to you about the development agreement. And then that'll conclude this portion of the presentation.
Good evening, Council. Dustin Powers with the Planning Department. As the purchase agreement lays out the terms of the purchase, the development agreement lays out the terms of the improvements and how they'll be accomplished as part of the development for the property. Some of the developer's responsibilities to prepare the site will be to plat the parcel that will be sold. So that's the 67,000 square feet that Jeff just presented to you. And then also execute a mutual access easement with the adjoining properties to create connectivity throughout the entire development. So one of the main objectives or goals of the rail yard redevelopment plan was connectivity throughout the rail yard property and not just the rail yard property, but the entire East Bank area. And so one way to do that is to enter into these mutual access easements. Ultimately, in this case, the mutual access easement would be between rail yard flats, the Howell property, and then other property owned by Sharapa and Jeff Scherschlick, as well as the city property that'll still be adjacent to the property. So again, ultimately entering into that to promote connectivity for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. We also call out some minimum standards or minimum details about the project. So as Jeff talked about and shown in the images, you know, they, they have a facility of 71,000 square feet, but we do try to hold them accountable to at least the same kind of scale associated with that. So we do call out some minimum height, as well as square footages related to the building. So again, a minimum of 60,000 square feet with at least 5,000 of that being commercial. And, and as they've presented informational and Jeff kind of highlighted, they're, they're obviously meeting those standards to date. And then also, again, if I go back to the site plan here, one of the things, again, talking about that mutual access, we wanted them to complete, basically, this is Exhibit B of the development agreement, the site plan, and really complete some of the connectivity that we already had approved in the site planner that they brought forward. And so one of the things that you'll see, or a couple of things that you'll see in terms of connectivity, in terms of vehicular traffic, is on the east side of the property where they enter in off of 8th Street. They have the parking there and that goes around and then ultimately provides connectivity into the Sharapa property and the existing parking lot there. So providing some of that vehicular connectivity. You see the bike trail that I'll talk a little bit about, a little bit more detail on the city property. And then in that courtyard area, between the yellow building, which is rail yard flats, and the orangish building, which is the Howell property or East Bank Depot building, there's that courtyard. And you can see the pedestrian connectivity and how that links into the adjoining properties. So again, promoting that connectivity as well as access for all modes of transportation was important part of the rail yard redevelopment plan, as well as the, highlighted here in the development agreement. Schedule is also called out in the development agreement. And so with that, the developer shall commence construction of these improvements starting by June 1 of 2020. And then complete those improvements or have substantial completion by December 31 of 2021. And we do have some other items in there. Obviously, we have a great partner in Jeff Scherschlick and has done some great work here in the city of Sioux Falls and his, and his family. And so we have all the confidence in the world that they're going to complete this project, but we do still write some of these protections into these agreements to just make sure that the developments occur on schedule in a timely manner. And so with that, there would be, there is a couple clauses. If the developer does not commence construction by that June 1, 2020 date, we do have the ability to repurchase the property at 95% of the value of which we sold it. And then if they start construction but fail to complete substantial completion by the December 31 date, we do have the ability to collect some damages, which is about 5% of the purchase price. The agreement also details what the city will be responsible for doing on the property that we'll be retaining or maintaining as part of this. So as Jeff showed, and I'll scroll back just quickly here to the site plan again, looking at the very east side or the right side of the image, you see kind of a green space there with a long linear path, which is essentially a bike, a bike path. That is the city's commitment as part of the development agreement to construct a bike path, birmingham and with trees and grass as shown in the site plan. What we would do is we would complete the burms and kind of the plantings in conjunction with the development of Lot 1, which is rail yard flats. So the December 31st date there is basically the time in which they need to complete their improvements. That's the time that we need to complete at least the birmingham and the planting so that it all looks nice along that new development. And then as we work with Jeff, kind of on the next item we'll talk about on the agenda, with kind of the Phase 2 of this, which is Lot 2 and the option there, we would be working in conjunction with him on extending that bike path through parcel B or Lot 2 to the north. And at that time is when we would actually come back through and do the bike path. So again, it's got to be some coordination and effort between both ours and the, our private parties here to kind of understand when that'll actually happen. But some of that will be dictated by the future agreements that would come forward for Lot 2. And then ultimately, once the bike path is constructed, the city will be responsible for owning and maintaining the bike path. But the developer has agreed to kind of maintain those surrounding areas for us as well. So with that, kind of just again, next steps for the, what we're here tonight is just to set a second reading for this ordinance to approve the sale and development agreement for Lot 1 for rail yard flats. We'd be back on December 3. And then ultimately, if we do get approval on December 3, we would be looking at closing on the property prior to the end of the year. So with that, we'll answer any questions that you may have on item 46. Myself, Director Jeff, as well as Jeff Scherschlick and Ann are here to represent the development.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this item? No? Counselors, do you have questions? Counselor Knightzir?
So to be clear, we would do the landscaping and the birmingham as in conjunction with their Phase 1 development, but the bike trail would not be constructed until Phase 2 is in construction?
Correct. So what we would be looking at doing, if we look at the site plan here, we'd be looking at basically doing the green grass area and the tree plantings, or roughly that. Obviously, building a bike trail right now would just be a bike trail to nowhere because it would start at 8th Street and go to a vacant lot. And so the plan would be to make sure that at least, whenever the bike trail does go through, it goes all the way to 6th Street so that there's a connection to 6th and 8th Street completely. And so we'll be needing to work that out with coordination with what would happen on that second lot. So ultimately, we would just want to make sure that we improve the grassing and the birmingham kind of upfront so that it looks, you know, nice next to the new development. And then we'll understand more when we get into those future agreements with Lot 2.
And I don't know if you mentioned it. Did you mention or do you stipulate the size of the berm, heights of the berm, or is that...
The agreement talks about that we will work on a mutually agreeable design for what that would look like. So if you, you know, in terms of birmingham, obviously, we're limited on how wide. I think that's about 30 feet in width. So I mean, again, we won't be able to go massive with the berm.
It won't be a 6-foot berm, but yeah, okay. And then, the, the stuff that we're looking at constructing, we believe we can fit this into our capital plan? I mean, that's, obviously, you must be looking at that.
Yeah, this is something that we'll have to prepare for and plan for in our capital plan.
In, in 21, is that one?
By the end of 2021, yeah.
Okay, and then I, I would, the only statement I would make is, I, I believe in these, in these developers and this project. That being said, as, as with anything, whenever you have these mutual things going on, there's always, there's always risks and all you can do is try to mitigate it. Like, for example, the liquidated damages. You said it's, there's a percentage in there? That's 5%?
Yeah, ultimately, if, and that's related to if they don't complete the substantial completion by the given date.
And, and that's where like the details, for example, I would just point out that when they, we have to develop this and they have to develop that, there's always going to be some amount of risk of somebody not finishing. And so we have to just make, try to make it as protected as we can, so.
Counselor Staley?
That being said, I, I had a conversation this morning with Jeff Scherschlick and he, he indicated to me that the project is now out of his pocket up to about 14 million. Is that correct, Jeff? Yes. So I was, I had just written down that I can embrace this project because I believe that it does nothing to put the citizens in peril. I can't, other than maybe we're going to put some green space and some grass along the side there that maybe won't be used. But the way this, this part of this project sits in my estimation is that Jeff is putting everything forward. He's buying this from us. He's, he's, I don't know what we're doing to put the citizens at risk. We're not giving him a tiff. He's, he's proposing a beautiful building. And worst case, he doesn't finish it and then we got things in place on that and to, to take and maybe rehab the property. But we're not investing $20 million of the citizens' money in something that Jeff's going to try to adhere his business to. So I, I think it's a great deal. Thank you. This is kind of, this kind of development, I think, citizens can get behind. I certainly am supporting it.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you. Dustin, what, what are we expecting then to build into the capital program for 2021? What do we think that this, the birmingham and the trail kind of cost estimates?
There's some things that we still need to work out through design on that. You know, talking with Jeff, there's going to be some possibly dirt that they're going to be excavating that they're not going to need that could be bermed over there, you know, as part of their project. And so again, understanding what that is. And again, we've, in the agreements, we've ultimately mutually agreed to kind of come to that design once these agreements are approved so that we can bring that number forward and get it planned in the program.
Just to be clear, though, we can't use any of the 670,000-plus for this project. It has to go into our transportation or into roads, correct?
Yeah, so what I would, so the, the money that we collect for the sales has to go back into another federal highway program. But what I would say is that would possibly go into something that we already have programmed in our CIP, which then opens up those sales tax dollars either be put to another project and what that is could be determined at that time. But, which could maybe lead back to the bike trail. But yes, the, the funds that we receive through the sale have to go to another federally highway eligible project.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, can we set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Sale, I believe. Any other debate? Call, yes, sir.
I just have one comment. Since the short time that I've been on the council, seems like more projects that the city's been involved in downtown have stopped or failed. It's exciting to see one going forward. So I'm very confident and very happy that we can move this forward.
Thank you. Call for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzir?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item? Item 47, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, declaring certain real property of the city's surplus and approving an option to purchase. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019.
This agreement is kind of the second part of our discussion here with Jeff Scherschlick and the proposed development of kind of a Phase 2. Again, if you recall back to about a month ago when we were here in informational, Jeff kind of presented what that vision is for kind of Sharapa 2 and what we would like to see or what they would like to pursue as part of combining both the city property here, that would be Lot 2, along with their adjoining properties and, and looking at a much larger scale development than, than what we saw in the first agreement we just looked at. So this agreement, again, is focused on Lot 2, which in the past has been referred to as parcel B. But again, is just that area north of the rail yard flats project that we just discussed. This will grant the developer an exclusive option to basically represent that property and be able to bring the development forward. And basically, has given him that exclusive option until December 31, 2021. And so if you recall back to just the agreement we just discussed, we're asking them to complete that development by December 31, 2021. This aligns well with hopefully bringing forward another development agreement that would really kind of kickstart Phase 2, kind of in a strategic approach here and timing. For consideration of the option, we'll be receiving a $10,000 payment. Ultimately, if this, if a development agreement or a purchase agreement is achieved after this, that $10,000 would just go to the purchase payment. But if after two years here, Jeff and his group isn't able to bring a project forward, the city just retains that, that $10,000 consideration. The agreement, if you look at it, is very similar to the offer to purchase that we just looked at with the previous ordinance. What it does, what this option does is basically lays out the terms of the purchase agreement that we would be looking at for Lot 2. Again, with not all the details of what the project is, but just the purchase agreement. So it does call out, again, that we would be selling that property or Lot 2 at $10 a square foot as well. But ultimately, we'll have to determine how much square footage is being sold as we'll likely be retaining some property for the bike trail area like we did with the previous agreement we just discussed. Ultimately, a development agreement and purchase agreement will have to come in front of city council for approval prior to any closing on the property. So again, this is just setting out, giving Jeff and his team an option to kind of represent this property, vet this property, understanding that they know what the purchase price is going to be and trying to bring a larger-scale project forward that we can look at and determine that, as that comes forward with the development agreement, purchase agreement. So again, we're trying to set a second reading for this on December 3 and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have questions? Counselor Staley?
Another thought came to my mind about this whole project. It's the word transparent. Transparent. It was out in the open. And I want to thank Jack Eckhoff sitting back there and Erica Beck because I believe that you two came to the table with Jeff Scherschlick here and you negotiated a fair price for the citizens. You do, you did your due diligence in this instance. And it was, it was out there. I mean, Jeff Scherschlick had us in and talked to, I think, probably most of the council members a while back and said this is what he's interested in. And, and the thing the citizens need to realize is that nobody else wanted this property. We got a piece of property that was out there. Other people could have come forth with some interest and no one else did. And yet, they still negotiated a, a great deal for the, for the taxpayers. So again, I think this is, this is a model that hopefully we have other developers adhere to and embrace because it's transparent, it's fair, and it doesn't put the citizens in peril's way. So, amen.
Counselor Knightzir?
I, and, and I totally believe in you, Jeff. I'm not trying to bring you into the middle of this, but I just want to throw out a thought experiment. Let's just assume that the project is halfway done and the developer goes belly up. You have a building that's $10 million and it's going to be 20 or something like that. And we can claw back and take the land back if we want to. And we have a half-done building. I would call that risk. You would have a mess on your hands. And you want to talk about liquidated damages? We'd have to go try to claw it out of them. And they probably would get a goose egg potentially because they might be bankrupt. There's always risk. You just have to look at the contracts and make an educated decision. Don't fool yourself. All of these projects have risk. It's a risk and reward.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. Well, I definitely do support this project. It's been stated that there hasn't been a lot of other developers looking into the property. That's a minor reason, though. The major reason why I support this is because of the individual behind this project. It's, he's proven that he builds quality. Sharapa is certainly an example of that. What we just saw on the previous item is another example. And I'm sure that not only does he design quality, but ensures that it's going to be built in a quality way. So I support this measure. And I guess that's it? I think we already have a motion on the floor, don't we? No, then I'll make a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3, 2019.
Okay.
Second, Brecky.
I think we already have a motion on the floor, don't we? No, then I'll make a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019.
Okay.
Second, Brecky.
Motion set by Kylie, seconded by Brecky. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Well, okay, I'm going to ask maybe Jeff Ekoff, who helped? Come on up, Jeff. So first of all, we don't have a $20, $21 million bond payment to make on this, which we, right, we're never going to have any bond payments to make on this property. No, that's right. So let's say the Counselor Neitzert's dream proposal just is, what's the right word, Counselor Neitzert? It wasn't, it was just speculative. Yes. So let's say that this gets half-built and Jeff Scherzlich goes bankrupt. So then the city would still, would own that building, right?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Well, yeah, so then we would step in. Is that written in that, who takes possession of the?
So if this project commences construction by the date that it's set, we no longer have a repurchase right to this property, and Jeff owns this property. So the only thing we're entitled to is liquidated damages. So if this project starts and commences construction, we don't have the buyback clause anymore. So the buyback is only prior to commencement because we don't want to get into a situation where we're owning a property that's, has multiple issues with a bankrupt company with a half-built building. So ultimately, that's, that's just, again, a risk that we're taking that, you know, we're entrusting this agreement with Jeff because we believe he's going to be able to get it done. But ultimately, we will not have the ability to buy back the property, at least pertaining to this agreement. I mean, I guess if we were to enter into something else to purchase it back, that would be much further down the line. But ultimately, the buyback clause only references if it's prior to commencement. After commencement, all we receive is the liquidated damages, and it's still owned by the private party.
But so what dam, what peril would that bring to the citizens other than an aesthetically half-completed building?
That would be what would be there.
So that's only damage? It'd just be something we're looking at. Financially, it wouldn't affect us because we're getting our money.
Nope, that property would just be there, half-built.
And it would actually, it'd fall back on the reputation of Jeff big time. Scherzlich, not Ekoff.
It would be the same as if any other building in town didn't complete.
Amen, thank you. Okay.
Anybody else? Call for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Neitzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item. Item forty-eight, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving an easement to Sprint Communications Company LP. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019.
Well, while we're talking rail yard, we have another rail yard item here for you. Again, this is basically granting an easement to Sprint Communications. This is not just for the specific sites we were talking about, but this is for the entire rail yard area, so parcels A through D and E on the south, so expanding basically from north of Sixth Street all the way down to the Viaducts. When we purchased the property from the rail yard, there were a number of easements associated with certain fiber optic companies that were listed on the property adjacent to the rail lines but didn't really dictate or show exactly the location of the easement area and the said line. If you may recall, when we purchased this property, actually, this specific utility was running down the center of the property, and we relocated that to the very eastern edge of the property where we'll be in the future constructing the bike trail. So ultimately, what this is doing is just recording where the actual easement is and confining Sprint Communications to just that location moving forward with their utility easement. So again, it expands throughout the entire property of the rail yard. This is just reflecting that in an accurate depiction.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this item? Counselors, any questions?
Moved to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019.
Motion by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Erickson. Any other discussion? Call for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Neitzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item. Next item, forty-nine, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, by revising boundaries for voting precincts as set forth in section 38.003 of chapter 38 Elections. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. Council Chair, is it okay if I present for me?
Yes, please do.
This is just a review, well, this is a review of what I presented last week. It affects certain boundaries within the city to currently existing precincts 4-11, 2-7, and 213. Basically, what we've done is we've incorporated additional, we've incorporated, we've extended the boundary of 4-11 due to an annexation, and down into precinct 2-13, that's been essentially split in two, adding a new precinct, given the size of the precinct. I'll cover each of those in detail here. This area right here that I'm highlighting, the blue area, was recently annexed. There are no registered voters there right now, but in order, in order to account for it within our ordinances, we need to adjust the ordinance, and what this ordinance proposes is to take precinct 4-11 and extend it down southeast into this annexed area. The other thing it would do in the future, if additional land down here is annexed, 4-11 would continue down to 41st Street as its southern boundary. That's only if additional land there is annexed. The other thing we did, which does not have a practical impact on the precinct right now because it, the eastern city limit is here at Six Mile Road, the, the, the proposed ordinance will explicitly set the eastern boundary of this particular precinct as Six Mile Road. So this is, it's not cleanup work. It's, again, to incorporate this recently annexed area, which, again, has no impact on registered voters, and there's no changes to polling locations. The other change would be to precinct 213. The two areas that I'm highlighting were precinct 213. I do want to point out that Lincoln County has already made this change. We're, we're making this change to reflect what they've done. What they've done is they've set the eastern boundary of precinct 213 at Southeastern Avenue, and the remainder of it, what used to be 213, is now a new precinct, 2-16. I mentioned before, this was done in large part because of the number of registered voters in the single precinct, and given this breakdown, it, it splits them essentially in half. I will point out that we did add a new polling place, which is outside of the precinct, Spirit of Peace Church, and voters will be voting that at the next elections. The other thing I want to note is that the voters in 216 have already been notified. I will point out previously on the 4-11 and 2-7 slide, Minnehaha County has not made that change yet, but they will once we make our change. Subject to your questions, that's all I have. Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this item? Counselors, any questions for Tom?
Moved to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Erickson. Any other discussion or debate? Call for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Neitzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale. That passes seven to zero. Next item. Next item, item fifty-one, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the placement of a sculpture on public property, Martin Luther King.
Good evening, Chairman Selberg, City Councilor, Sioux Falls. Russ Sorenstegin with the city Sioux Falls Planning Office. This evening, I have the sculpture artist Porter Williams and Lisa Meyer with Bronze Age Art Casting for this item as well. Your consideration tonight is a resolution, which is to approve the placement of a sculpture known as Martin Luther King on public property within the Van Eppes Park. Sioux Falls Arts Council, along with the support of the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation and the city, Sioux Falls proposed a life-size bronze sculpture figure to be known as Martin Luther King by artist Porter Williams of Sioux Falls. The bronze sculpture depicts the figure of Martin Luther King standing with an outreach arm and hand, measuring approximately five feet, seven inches in height, three feet by three feet in length and width. The proposed placement for this sculpture would be located on the city-owned property at the south end of the oval lawn sidewalk area within Van Eppes Park. Sculpture will be displayed with an informative plaque anchored securely to the existing sidewalk or a courtside pedestal accessible to the public and would be surrounded with landscaping and lighting. Reverend Dr. King is best known for advancing civil rights through nonviolence. What may not be known to many is that Dr. King arrived in Sioux Falls on January 12th in 1961. He was a guest of the nearby St. John's Baptist Church that once was located adjacently north of the current day Van Eppes Park. Dr. King addressed an evening dinner meeting with, at the Knife and Fork Club at the downtown Cataract Hotel. Dr. King stayed overnight at the church parsonage and spoke with St. John's Church the very next day. There is a Minnehaha County historical marker commemorating Dr. King's visit to Sioux Falls that's placed on the northwest corner of Van Eppes Park today. The artist intends to complete the sculpture project by January 20th, 2020, which happens to be Martin Luther King Day, and the gift, the sculpture, to the city of Sioux Falls, adding it to its city's permanent artwork collection, and it would be included in the city's annual art conservation maintenance program. Both the Visual Arts Commission and the Parks and Recreation Board have reviewed this request and recommend unanimous approval for this sculpture and its placement at their, from their October meetings, respectively. We've not had any public comments received on this sculpture placement request. I know Dr. King had a dream. At this time, I would like to invite Porter Williams, the artist, to the podium to share his artistic dream of Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ. Come on up.
This here is a model of the piece that will be five foot seven, placed at Van Eppes Park. You know, this is a, as being a sculptor for the past 30 years, this is one of the pieces that I really wanted to place in the city of Sioux Falls somewhere, and then I was offered the opportunity to place it at Van Eppes Park. And so I'd appreciate it if you'd both to have this placed in your park. Thanks.
It's beautiful.
And the completion date, I'd like to call up Lisa from Bronze Age Casting because I believe that the mock-up piece that is five foot seven is being shipped out tomorrow. That's the styrofoam deal, and now I'll have to redo it in clay. Set this piece down, sorry.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to speak to the item? Counselors, any questions? Counselor Kylie.
Well, first of all, Porter, thank you very much for your, your efforts in, in this project because I know that you have played a very instrumental role in bringing us to where, bringing us to where we are today. Earlier, we talked about suitable person, suitable location. Well, I really feel that this applies. Suitable person, who better than Martin, Dr. Martin Luther King to be, to be placed in a very suitable location, a location where he actually visited the city of Sioux Falls many years ago. So I wholeheartedly support this measure.
Thanks, Counselor. Anybody else? All right.
I move to approve this item.
Okay.
Second, Erickson.
Motion to approve by Kylie, seconded by Erickson. Any other discussion? Call for a vote, please. Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky. Brecky. Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Neitzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please. Item fifty-two, a resolution amending the city of Sioux Falls engineering design standards.
My name's Nick Burns. I'm Principal Engineer for Water and Light and Power here at the city of Sioux Falls. Here to talk to you today about updates to our engineering design standards, specifically chapter fifteen roadway lighting, and I'll be asking tonight for approval for updating engineering design standards by resolution. So last week at Council Informational, I gave a full presentation on the updates to the design standards. So tonight, I'll just point out some of the notable updates. The most noteworthy item is the 30-foot direct berry aluminum pole. We're updating that to be a 25-foot light pole with transformer base and concrete footing. And then in table 15-1, we're also, I guess, specifying the dimensions of the concrete footings for all street designations. And then we added a note allowing the precast concrete bases to be installed in lieu of the cast-in-place. Section 15.5, we also added language to prohibit interduct splicing, and basically what this means is any splicing may have be done at the light pole itself instead of in between light poles. And then just kind of a, an overview of what the project timeline looked like. In June of 2019, we presented to the Home Brothers Association, and at that meeting, we specifically talked about the update going from the direct berry poles to the poles with the concrete footings. And then November 6th, we presented to IRAB last week, Council Informational, and then here tonight, asking for support and approval to update the design standard by resolution. January 1st, 2020 would be the date of full implementation pending approval. And with that, I feel any questions?
Okay, good. Well, we do, though, we have to dial Counselor Brecky back in, I guess.
If you just stand by a moment.
Is there anyone in the public who wants to speak? Side item?
I'm here.
Okay, we're on item fifty-two, Counselor.
All righty, thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one question, and I, and I thought of it after the informational session when you presented this previously. We're, we're going from a 30-foot direct berry pole to a 25 that'll be installed on a pedestal. Was a portion of that 30-foot actually buried then, or was that the, was that the height after it was buried?
That was the height from the ground to the top.
From the ground to the top. But you'd, you'd indicated that the canopy, this might actually serve a better purpose because it'll have less interference from the canopy from.
Yeah, I guess.
Our trees.
We considered it kind of a net wash, I guess, just because of that reducing the conflict with the tree canopy, and then also the update, now that we've gone to the LED lighting, our light coverage has been a lot better since we've done that as well.
Very good. That's it. Unless there's any other questions, I move to approve.
I just, I want to make a comment, not, not about this necessarily, but I just, so the public knows that we started our informational at four o'clock, and now it's almost 9:30. And I want to say that we have long meetings and we have wonderful dialogue, and I appreciate it. Everybody, I think everyone, we ask the questions, we vet things out, we may not agree, but this is democracy when we have this discussion. So that, just nothing to do with this necessarily, but just, just to state that I appreciate it. I mean, there are long days, these council meetings, but it's worth every single second because we're doing what's best for the citizens. So, thank you, Nick.
Yeah, you bet.
Thanks, Counselor. Anybody else? So we have a motion and a second. Let's call for a vote. Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Neitzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item. Item fifty-three, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rescheduling the business of the city from the scheduled city council meeting for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020, to Monday, February 3rd, 2020. If I can present that one.
You certainly may.
This just, this moves the meeting up one day. This is the first meeting of the month of February so that the council may travel to Pier for South Dakota Municipal Day at the Legislature. Okay. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak to this item?
In the future, on these, Bruce Danielson, in the future, on these days when you're going to have meetings on a Tuesday. going to have meetings on a Tuesday, you probably need to start considering what you're going to be doing with posting the agendas, posting any of the information. Maybe it needs to be moved back to Thursday, so we have Friday to be able to, as a public, be able to work with the documents. Right now, when it's, when the information is put up on the web on Friday at five, we at least have Monday to talk to council members, to do the research that's necessary that, so we know what's going on up here, and we can better inform you people at the dais what's happening. If you can't move the information from, from Friday back to Thursday, then maybe you need to move the meeting instead of on Monday over to Wednesday so that we still have that ability to contact everybody and to find out what's going on. Right now, there's this big deficit of information, and the Walworth County auditor was arrested for not being able to have information out there in time for the people to be able to, to deal with it. And I think you guys need to start considering what is going to be happening with that kind of litigation going on out in the real world. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second.
Kylie. Any discussion? All right, call for a vote.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Mr. Chair, could I have a point of privilege?
May.
I believe today is our esteemed city attorney's birthday, and so I want to wish him a happy birthday, as I'm sure everybody else does, and thank him for spending his night of his birthday at a council meeting and not delegating. So, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Oh, I think we should sing. Mr. Chair, move to adjourn.
Second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.